Madam Vice Chair, it is 6:00 PM and about that time for us to to get started with our our study session for for August the fourth, August the fourth at 6:00 PM. I will ask that those that that just joined the meeting for security purposes to to add your add your your video, please. So we'll wait a moment before before everyone gets their video started. And again, just as a reminder, for those that haven't added their video, we're we'll ask for security purposes for you to do so. And then we will, we will get started. With that, Madam Vice Chair, we'll, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. House. The Montgomery County School Board Study Session is called for order. Mr. House?
Yes, ma'am. There, the first, first item on the agenda is as a retiree insurance update. And and I'd like to to turn it over to our Chief Human Resources, Janine Johnson, to to provide that update. Mrs. Johnson?
Good evening, Mr. House and Board Members. Some thank you for allowing me to present this information. This is, for the last 26 years, the school board has offered to fund a portion of the retiree insurance premiums, with the exception of one year. And you will see attached to this document are the the guidelines to qualify. This is a list of guidelines that employees must meet to qualify for this benefit. And David, if you want to scroll down a little bit, keep on going. Okay, and you'll see we have different plans. Plan one, it shows the premium and for the retiree. And then the amount that the Board of Education contributes, we do contribute at a 50% rate. And then the same for plan two. And you can see the difference between plan one and plan two. Plan two does have a higher deductible and a different coinsurance, and it does have a lower premium. So these are the two plans that we do offer, assuming that an employee does qualify. And then, David, if you want to scroll down to the final page, there's a recommendation. And at this time, we are recommending that the board continue to offer this retirement package. Currently, it is offered through the year of 2023. Last year, you did vote to approve through 2023. And at this time, we are requesting the recommendation to approve through 2024. We do think it's important to offer this for several years in advance. So therefore, our retirees do not feel that they have to make a decision each year. Concerned about whether or not the retiree benefit will be offered the the following year. So if this recommendation does go forward, we will be offering this up to the year of 2024. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Janine. The Madam, Madam Vice Chair, the second item on the agenda is the collaborative conferencing management team. Of course, they meet annually. And and our Chief Human Resource Officer, Janine Johnson, does head up the CMCSS side of of that conferencing team. And I will have her to go over that information at this time as well.
Okay, thank you. As a reminder, we are required by law to, for the board, to designate a group of members from the professional team to handle the collaborative conferencing. And this is the list that Mr. House would be recommending. We do have one change. And as you know, Dr. Mason Bellamy has left us. And Dr. Rosalyn Evelyn Evans will be replacing him. Will make up the seven members, as you see listed there. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We, we're going to move to Madam Vice Chair. And if you're not on mute already, I'll ask that you go ahead and place, place yourself on mute. We're getting a little bit of feedback. But we'll go ahead and move to item number three, which is a resolution for 2020, 21 for a budget amendment. And our Chief, Chief Financial Officer, Marcia Demarest, will, will walk us through that item as, as we get it queued up on the screen.
All right, good evening, Mr. House and Board. So we have a budget amendment before us tonight. So we've had a couple this year as we work to just get prepared with different items related to establishing things that we need in place for COVID-19. So we do have four funds that I am presenting tonight. Three of those funds are just a showing the beginning fund balance. We have closed out the year. And so we do now have our actual beginning fund balance. And so for each of those funds, we always bring those to you so that you can see that. So on this first page here, on the general purpose fund, we have no changes in revenue. This page here is our beginning reserves and beginning fund balance. If you look in the third column there, where it has the proposed increase and decrease, those are the items that we are amending. So we have a reserve for our career ladder based on what we actually had at the end of the year for our reserve adjustment there of 62,793 to show that reserve balance at negative 826. And then on our beginning fund balance, you went a little too fast. The beginning fund balance number there, based on our closeout, we actually are adjusting that by 6.6 million to bring to what we actually had for our ending fund balance of the year, to begin the year. All right, now you can scroll on. All right, so on this page here, the Special Education Fund, we have two amounts there under contracted services and supplies and materials. So we receive usually in the fall an amount for high cost reimbursement. And we had an amount this year that due to the COVID-19, we had set up last year, and we did not expend those funds. So we are just simply reestablishing those funds and those accounts for this year. And go on. Okay, so here, under other student support contracted services, you'll see an adjustment of $91,800. And that is for contracts with our athletic trainers. There have been some changes regarding requirements and in getting athletic trainer contracts in place for all of our sports this year. We're making an adjustment to that line item there. And then, under regular instruction support, an adjustment there of 165,000 in salaries. So those are funds that were established for our $75 teacher workday, which we have worked with collaborative conferencing to make an adjustment. They will have a day, normally that's something they've done off calendar. And this year, they will be doing that when they come back on August 7th. And they will have days there on calendar to do that work. So we are moving, we worked with them to to move those funds to be able to establish those for in an account for a personal protective equipment, sanitizers, and items like that for the classroom. There, under the special education, again, this is under special education support, reestablishing high cost reimbursement funds in the contracted services and supplies and materials account. Under technology on contracted services, we have an adjustment there of $480,000. And that's for internet connectivity and hotspots as we work on virtual and preparedness for if if we need to go to remote. Okay, and then, under there, COVID-19 expenditures, that is the new function that was set up this year for the state. And you'll see there, we're, we're moving the $165,000 from that salary account that we had talked about earlier. And then, under the equipment line item there, we're establishing a million dollars for the use of, as we, you know, look at preparation for the school year, wanted to have funds available in there so that we could, you know, if there's specific needs that we have for equipment, we're currently looking at some potentials of dividers. You know, we've been having to do, you know, some Plexiglas, making accommodations for certain employees. And so wanted to have those funds available there. And then you'll see there, under our ending reserves, with the adjustments that we've had and the adjustment for the beginning fund balance, we actually have an increase in our fund balance of 4.7 million. You'll see the adjustment there on the career ladder reserve. And so that brings us to our estimated projected fund balance. And I guess before we move, well, I'll go ahead and go through the other ones. And then we can come back if we have any questions. So the next fund here is the Child Nutrition Fund. And the only thing that we have here is showing the adjustment for our actual closeout. And you'll see there are beginning fund balance increase of 285,797. And and there, on this, the second page, you'll see that they're rolling into the projected ending fund balance. The Transportation Fund, again, the beginning fund balance, we actually closed out with a million, 88,701 increase in that beginning fund balance number for the year. And then, on the next page, you'll see that adjustment hitting our ending fund balance number there. And then, finally, the Extended School Funds, just an adjustment there of 16,695 to bring us to our actual beginning fund balance. And then, on the next page, just showing that amount hitting the projected ending fund balance. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Board Members, the next item on the agenda is a resolution for, for school board authorization to sell, for the sale of surplus computers. Now, of course, over the course of the year, you, we are, there are routine items that that you typically see for for items that are surplus, that are going to govdeals.org. And that's no different here. What was different is that we, we had a neighboring school district that reached out to us. And we had several computers that were older, that were going to govdeals, that were being surplus. Of course, we had ordered replacements to get out to our students. That neighboring school system essentially said that they weren't going to get, you know, computers for their students for quite some time. So we worked with Carol Joyner to to see if there was a way to be able to authorize a purchase from that school system of these surplus computers. And that is what this, this resolution is all about. It's an opportunity to help a neighbor. And and we want to be able to to do so in in this manner. They're wanting to to purchase 2,000 of our surplus computers that we were, that were out of commission, that were, we were putting on govdeals.org at about $125 per unit, which is about the cost that we were expecting to to get from them on govz.org. So, so just wanted you all to understand exactly what this was. It happened really fast, and we, we worked really fast to be able to support them. As you can see in front of you, the resolution is there for, for your first rude, first read and and hopefully approval. Any questions, be glad to answer at this time.
I have one question, Mr. House. Is there a possibility we might need one of those computers, any of those computers?
No, no, we, these were surplus and ready to go. And if somebody would have, would have purchased them on, on gov's deal, we would have, we would have sold. So, no, we, we've, we made the necessary purchases back in February for for replacement, which is the reason why these were, these were being surplus.
But the one that we purchased, did it include the possible growth of our district? Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Madam Vice Chair, I'll pass it back over to you for for County Commissioner comments.
Thank you, Mr. House. County Commissioners, do you have comments at this time?
Thank you. It's good to see all of y'all again and appreciate the information.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Any other business, board members?
This is Charlie. Yes, ma'am. Back to Ms. Johnson, just to clarify my thinking. How many years do we have right now that we extend out to offer insurance for the retirees? Was it three years?
If this is approved, it will go to 2024. So without this approval, we have it up to through 2023.
Right, and I understand the reason for it. But does it take that many years? I mean, would two years suffice as far as making the decision of the retiree being able to make a decision? I know it gives them a longer, longer time. And I just, to clarify my thinking, was there a particular reason that we have to go three years versus two?
I think we've just always felt that it was important to provide retirees as many years in advance awareness that they have that option available so that people don't get anxious and decide to retire early in fear that the benefit won't be available a couple of years out.
Right, but as far as, we couldn't roll over two years versus the three years each time?
We could, we've just always felt it was good to be able to show that it's been approved for X amount of years.
And then we're obligated once this is done, correct?
Right, to offer that benefit, yes, up until 2024, which we've always felt to be a very important benefit for our retirees.
And the, let's see, the other question on the computers, then, are these working computers? I mean, evidently, there's some value if another system, I understand that we've already bought to replace these. But there's, there's no, we couldn't use them in the future possibly, or for our children that once we go to a lower grade level?
We have a cycle for, for how long we we keep computers. And and David, if you'd like to to jump in and talk about our life cycle for for computers, this is something that, you know, pretty much every school district goes through. It just so happens that this school district knew that, that we were going through our cycle, and we purchased early. They actually had, had made a purchase of computers but weren't, weren't looking to, the computers were coming through China, coming from China. And it was their understanding that they weren't, wouldn't be there for quite some time. So, Mr. Holman, you'd like to talk about the life cycle of the computers?
Yeah, we typically look at a four-year life cycle. And part of the purchase process, when we look at this cycle, we also calculate in an estimated value of what that computer will be on the the back end when we sell it as a, as a total cost of ownership for those computers. In this instance, we're actually receiving a little more money than we we would have anticipated. But that's partially due to the lack of computers that are on the market right now. The supply chain has been disrupted to somewhat because of both COVID and and some of the disagreements that we have with neighboring countries such as China. And so, right now, the price is coming in a little higher. But they are paying for the exact cost that we sold the first batch of computers. We've already sold one batch this summer. And the second batch, this would have been included in that batch. So we have offered it to them at a price that that we've already been selling those computers at. And we're keeping track of that. The other advantage for us is, is by selling these directly, we don't pay a fee to govdeals for it. So there's actually a slight savings to the district.
Okay, appreciate that information, and thank you.
Mr. House?
Yes, sir.
The $1 million for PPE, do we think that's going to be enough to last us for the year? And did that money come out of the CARES dollars or it come out of taxpayer?
So the, the $1 million is is really a set aside, Mr. Garland. We have already made a major purchase of PPE already. I don't have that, that exact order, but we are prepared to start the school year. We also were notified by, by the governor via the Department of Education that a teacher PPE packet would be provided, that would be replenished also. So we, we have plenty of PPE on hand. But we wanted to move forward and and have an amendment in place just in case there were other things that we needed to do. As, as we've heard, there are certain, you know, teachers that that might, might need particular things because of health issues that that we need to move forward and do. So this is just for additional support, just in case, so that we don't have to come back to you at the last minute. We'll have a set aside to be prepared for anything else. But we're in good shape and have have ordered quite a bit of PPE over the course of the last few months.
The last question, child nutrition funds itself, right? With the payments coming from the students. Also, them being out all of the summer for COVID, is there a possibility that we might have to help fund some of that if we can't get enough kids back in the school system to eat lunch?
So we were very careful about, of course, we served lunch at 23 sites over the course of the summer. So we continue, you know, with the process of serving. One of the things that we did worry about was serving and possibly giving it to the home. We were able to, to really balance that to where we ended up in a good place. What was the second part of your question?
We would have to go back because of the number of kids that's going to be in class, in class this year. Would it be possible that we might have to put some more funds in that account for them to be able to operate for the full year?
Not the expectation. Mr. Summerall, do you want to provide any additional insight here? But no, to answer the question, that that would not be the expectation.
Okay, thank you.
So to the first part of the question, the only, the only negative fiscal impact is we have operated five school buses to get to children that had no way to get to the meals. And, you know, we, we ran that through Mr. House and felt like that was the right thing to do. So we've been doing that, and there, there's no revenue stream to reimburse that. So we'll use the general purpose or the transportation budget to handle that part. And then, as far as the, the second piece, we're, we're continuing to plan to make meals available to children that selected the virtual option. And then, should the district decide to implement remote learning, either at specific schools, groups of schools, or the entire district, our plan right now would be to, to continue a curbside feeding service for the children of the district.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Other questions? I would like to share a few items. The first is just a simple, simple update in terms of the numbers. As you know, we, we were looking for quite some time at about 60% of our students that, or parents that had chosen the, the in-person traditional option for, for their students. And about 40% at the, the virtual K-12 school. That, that number has, has pretty much stayed steady. Right now, we, we have about 14,283 students that are signed up for the virtual, which is still right at about 40%. We have about 19,963 students that are signed up for, for traditional. And that's right, just, just a little bit above 55%. We still do have a little over 1,000 that haven't specified to us. And then, we're also, you know, expecting a continued enrollment because of growth. So we're still at about, again, 40% that have signed up for virtual, about 55% traditional. Still about a little, little over 1,000 that, that haven't, haven't let us know what, what their selection is. So just wanted to provide you with the latest numbers as of today. Also, from an athletic standpoint, wanted you all to be aware that we would be communicating or communicated with our coaches out there that CMCSS will delay contact sports team participation until August the 31st, essentially until school starts. We would rather that be consistent with our start. Although the most recent TSS AA guidance on contact sports allowed for games to begin as scheduled, there are health and safety concerns with beginning the season before August or before our start date, including the limited duration of scope of student athletes conditioning. As I shared with you last meeting, I was very concerned about us moving forward with, without our students having the opportunity to to condition. So essentially, here, we, we will wait until August, August the 31st before, before we start playing. Now, CMCSS will still allow for full football practices to start after teams complete the heat acclimation period. And soccer teams will begin full practice this week, following established health and safety protocols, of course. Student athletes, non-contact sports may, may compete. However, all school or district-sponsored in-state travel via CMCSS transportation will continue to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. District leaders will continue to monitor and evaluate athletic activities and review the latest health and safety guidance, making, making modifications to the plan as necessary. So with here, we're, we're just wanting to do what's, what's safe is possible by allowing, at the same time, allowing our students to to move forward and compete. The, the third item that I have is, is, is just an update in terms of principals. Our principals are back on contract now, of course. They immediately went into COVID-19 scenario and response training. I had a chance to sit in on a portion of that today. And as you can imagine, it was a, you know, a full day's worth of training. Of course, teachers will be on contract pretty soon. They'll be doing some of the same in terms of preparing for all the different possibilities of virtual scenario base. So this is that time period where we, we wanted to have some time with our principals, with our teachers, to prepare for what August the 31st would, would possibly look like. As, as we told you, this plan is, is fluid. We got additional information within the last couple hours in reference to the State Health Department and possibly making a, a major, major shift. And and we'll hopefully get more information around that from, from the State Health Department on Friday. So I will provide you with that update when I get, get it on Friday. But we're expecting a significant, significant update. I have, of course, as you know, we have looked at our, our opening matrix on a consistent basis. And I'm going to share a, a quick snapshot of our opening matrix. I know this is small, so I apologize. But this is something that we post on our website on a, on a daily basis. And and of course, CMCSS, along with the Montgomery County Health Department, reviews this data on a daily basis. We take a look at total positive cases out of total tested, the number of new positive cases out of the number of total tested, new active cases per population, per 100 and per 50, 100,000 and per 50,000 in the county. Percent of COVID-19 spread in the community following the Tennessee Department of Health guidance for low spread, medium spread, and high spread. And and we have listed on our web, website kind of the thresholds. Low spread would be less than, than 0.5% positive in Montgomery County. Medium spread would be between 0.5 and 1%. And high spread would be greater than 1, 1%. In this far right-hand column that I'm highlighting right now, that is the column that, that kind of aligns with, with this matrix. And as you can see today, let's see here, you can see today, we're at point, point four, point four, four, seven. And as I indicated, where that puts us in the mate, on the matrix here, is, is the low spread, which is less than 0.5. But as you can see, over the course of the last 15 days, it gives us a real good idea of, of where we are, whether we're seeing increases, decreases as a whole. So this data, we're looking at on a daily basis, and it helps guide some of our decision-making as we move forward. And I'm thankful for, for the partnership with the, with the Montgomery County Health Department as we look and talk through this data on a, on a daily basis. We actually have a communicable We actually have a communicable disease meeting tomorrow. And we'll be talking about not only this data, but but also items that that have to have to do with our reopening. So with that being said, Madam Vice Chair, that does conclude my other business.
Thank you, Mr. House. If no other business, we declare this meeting adjourned. Have a good evening.